I'll call the meeting to order.
I would like to convene as super flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to convene as Walrus County Board of zoning Board. Is there any old business? New business? Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
You got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed. I'd like to convene as Walrus County Board of zoning adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? Yeah, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
I got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed. I'd like to convene as Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to add to the agenda. We had discussed this last meeting about the Highway Department and the CDLs. I think we'd like to talk about that a little more, so I'd like to add that motion in for the CDL. In the Highway Department, they came up late. We need to do some highway transfers. And then we got a letter from David Ritter, so we're gonna go over that. So I'd like to approve the agenda.
Yes, Chairman.
I would like to add an executive session probably right after claims for personnel.
Right, anything else?
I move for approval.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed. Okay, public forum. Bob Thomason. You got three minutes, I guess, for you to speak.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I would first like to address Mr. Holgard's remarks of the last meeting. I find those remarks discriminatory, disgraceful, and unbecoming of a county commissioner. There is absolutely no call for that remark. And you, Mr. Chairman, should have stopped it right then and there, and he didn't. You let it continue, and he said it again. I call for his resignation immediately. He's got no business on his Board of Commissioners, and quite frankly, neither do you, Mr. Chairman. Just for that reason.
Everybody's got their opinion.
That's right. And hopefully, more people are gonna voice their opinions. As far as item number 19, when you're looking at that pickup, again, in Mr. Holgard's own words, you do it for one, you do it for everybody. If you buy a pickup for landfill, the landfill, you buy a pickup for every department head. Your own words, Commissioner. Your own words. Mr. Schlemmer, I'm glad you're leaving. You are a disgrace. You voted for this idiotic resolution, crippling our Sheriff's Department. The three of you endangered every life in this community, in this county, by crippling our Sheriff's Department. I want you to think about that long and hard every day. These other two have a chance to redeem themselves. You don't. So you think about that every day.
I'm gonna ask you to move on. You're not gonna sit around in three minutes and just criticize everybody.
I'm done.
Bill. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Bill Markley from McCashen. I'd like to address Commissioner Holgard's statements. A little history. Our house seems to be a little bit out of order, in my opinion. And I think it behooves us, as citizens of Walrus County and the Commission, to see if we can get it back in order. It seemed to get a little bit off track. We had a jail that wasn't adequate. I think if all the Commissioners had got behind the bondage, we would have a new jail now. And I regret that some of you didn't do that. Then, as a result of that, we were forced to close the jail, which was unfortunate, but I guess necessary. And then we were forced to transport prisoners, inmates, all over the region and pay exorbitant costs to house them. And then, on top of that, we reduced the personnel in the Sheriff's Department and then kind of restructured their wages. And then at the last meeting, we even considered not paying transport personnel per diem. And gentlemen, our house is not in good order. And then on top of that, it was suggested at the last meeting by Commissioner Holgard that what he does in his business is consider whether a person is a member of the National Guard or not prior to hiring them, and suggested that the sheriff do the same.
I did not say that.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's against the law.
I did not say that. I said I would take it into consideration and have plans made for it. I did not say that I would not hire somebody from the National Guard.
Well, I'm not here to debate the issue, but I would say that based on all of this and the lack of the support for the Sheriff's Office, that I would call for the recognition of Mr. Kevin Holgard and any Commissioner that supports, even indicates, that that should be a consideration in any hiring practice. And I'd also ask for the resignation of any County Commissioner that does not fully fund and support the Sheriff's Department and is not willing to pay our transport officers per diem when they're on the road. Gentlemen, that's all I had to share with you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else? Consider motion approved, County Commission minutes of December 15th, 2020. Does everybody have a chance to go over them? If so, I'd take a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed. Number 15, consider motion approved claims to be presented. Does everybody have a chance to go over them?
I have a question on one. It's Bill from the Highway Department at the Holts and Gravelhocks landfill. Everything is built out on total price, as if it was a private citizen to get this work done. I don't believe that it's necessary to be charging other departments, saying it was a private citizen to do it. We, landfill accepted all those houses that was in Java that was tore down for nothing. All that was waived. Why is there a big bill in here for the highway doing something for landfill?
Yes, Gary. I didn't know you was here, sorry.
A question for the State's Attorney. Can you review a statute for me? I believe that's illegal for the Allo Department to expense County Road and Bridge dollars on anything other than highway system.
I can check. I don't know off the top of my head what it is.
This isn't intended to cause a problem, Kevin, but it is $4,000 worth of expenses. If it would have been, and even regardless, that if it's $4,000, you people make the decision whether you transfer or not. We've taken trees to the landfill free of charge. Trees probably are free of charge in the county anyhow, right?
No, trees aren't.
And they've never been built for them. That's why you people are seated there to resolve. I think it's illegal for us to spend tax dollars, wheel tax, license plate fees by providing something to the town of Java, the city of Mowbridge. That's tax dollars to operate the highway system. And if we're using $4,000 of that elsewhere, I don't think it's appropriate, but like I said, it's your call.
So my question is, should we have charged somebody for all that trash from all of those houses to the landfill?
You're gonna charge yourself? If you remember, there was, and then if you remember, I remember it clearly, that the Highway Department wasn't reimbursed to any effect the $20,000 that was spent for the building demolition. We absorbed that. Technically, it should have came out of Commissioners' contingency or some other form, but I absorbed that. I even made a public comment today. And in the intent of working with everybody, I wasn't gonna jump up and down and kick and scream about $20,000, but technically, you can't do that. In my opinion.
That's why I was just being, I did it for others. I was just questioning why we're doing it now.
We're providing, we were providing a service other than what was Highway Department-related.
Same way with those houses?
I wish it wouldn't have got involved in houses to start with, Kevin, but you did.
That was my only thing, is that, I know we've done it with those houses. Why are we doing it now, I guess, is my only question.
Yes, Mr.?
Gary, are you saying that with the gravel, because it's tax dollars being used, we're using highway tax dollars to transfer that gravel instead of, like, the houses weren't necessarily tax-related, it's just, is that what you're...
You wanna step in, Mr. Attorney? Or would you rather stay on the sidelines? Here again, my opinion is that the Highway Department is funded by, and I find this somewhat ridiculous, but there's no... I posed the question before, does the Highway Department operate solely on vehicle license plate sales and wheel tax? Is there any appropriations from County General that comes into the Highway Department? So if it's, if we're operating on vehicle license plate fees and wheel tax only, then why are we providing a service to some other entity that can get the revenue from the sale of landfill space or buildings? That's real estate property? Where the property taxes on houses, you use that money and pay for stuff like that, so...
I was just bringing up, with, I know we did the houses, and there was no charge for that, so I'm just curious why they get charged full, at least full price.
Yeah, the houses, the Highway Department, they weren't Highway Department houses. You know?
Do you read the Commissioners?
I was just questioning.
The bottom line, if you would have, if you would have asked or then provided that same amount of material, the bill would have been doubled at least by hiring outside services. Let me say again, it doesn't intend to cause problems internally with the Departments, but it was submitted to recoup our expenses. Bottom line.
All right, any other questions on the claims?
I move for approval.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
I got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed. I take the motion to go into executive session.
I shall move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll take a second.
Take a second. More discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion passed.
We're back on.
I have an executive session at 9:23. Okay, we'll go on to number 16, discussion regarding extension administrative assistant duty. Or did I vote?
Good morning. So how are you, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Not too bad.
Anyway, I'm sure that... Um, discussion about the administrative assistant duties that have been running out for three weeks in the paper. I've had some, some different examples, and I do have a resume. But I think we probably should have some clarification as to actually what the duties should be, so if we go forward and do an interview for interviews. I know exactly what he says for county, individual, what they're doing with these.
Is there something from SDSU that says what their duties are?
No, because it's, it's counties' position, and it's your, it's up to you guys how you want this position to look. But thank you for asking, because every county's different in how they deal with it. Some counties have an administrative assistance, some counties have two administrative assistants, some counties have part-time administrative assistants. It just depends on the situation. Or the county in on which, as far as, you know, what the expectation is. I think for us, in our particular position, with me being split between the two counties, it surely would be advantageous to have that person have a visible presence, especially when I'm not here, you know, answering the phone and probably resuming pesticide applicator training and things with 4H online and, you know, other extension questions that you were doing. But I'm sure you want to have a better, how you say, a clearer view of the position than you just feel like that I'm just.
See, the administrative, the extension person used to do the Medicare and all that kind of stuff. I had a list of it.
So do you mean like the shine position and that, then? I mean, as, and they call it here in South Dakota, the Medicare Part D?
Yeah.
But that's completely up to you, as Commissioners in the county, making this position, you know, what you want it to be. I just wanna be able to, as we go forward, find this person or to, you know, hire a person. I don't want there to be, oh yeah, by the way, forgot to tell you, you're doing this, or, you know, I wanna be straightforward with the person, so they know what they're doing.
Yeah, because I was looking at, I was just looking at that with during the 9/11. That looks like a pretty good deal right now with the 9/11. Becca, do you know all the things that the extension is supposed to do?
No. I, I just know that they used to do Medicare Part D, pesticide stuff, and then just 4H assistant, really. That's...
I think one of the big ones alone is the pesticide, I think. Brenda did quite a few of them, I think.
They did, because SDSU had cleared Campbell County to have a, to do, you know, the applicator training tests. So she was drawing from quite a wide range. It could be from anywhere, because I'm not sure, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't do it in county.
Does Campbell County do it now?
We've been approved to do it because we just didn't know, January is usually a big month for pesticide applicator trainings, and the COVID pandemic, they're not doing any in-person, so it's virtual or online, pretty much online, so felt the need to, so like, you know, had a discussion with Amanda Bachman, and she has allowed for myself and Lindell Peterson, my administrative assistant in Campbell County, to be available to do this.
So you can do it now in Campbell?
Mm-hmm. Because we have quite a few people, residents in that area too, that come and do that. And we even have some from North Dakota that come, because they're out in the land, you know, because sometimes they have land border, you know, borders both states. So sometimes they come and get it done here, it's on coast, or for whatever reason, I don't know where that is. But, you know, all the, all the northern plains and Big Pae group employees and stuff, you know, any youth employees have to, you know, now they'll be working with, wanting to get not only just the applicator license, they wanna be doing, you know, the general test, plus they'll wanna be picking up like seed treatment and that sort of thing. And then you have some of the lawn and turf companies will have, Aprilville come and Mayfish Parks, and that sort of thing, you know, trying to get it done. They're ready to roll out in the field, roll out, you know, doing landscaping or whatever they're, they're, like, fully licensed, and they're currently there, that they're testing.
What is like, let's just use Campbell County for example, what are they all, what are their duties on?
Um, for Lindell, I have her eight hours a week. The other 22 hours is in the highway, she's a highway administrative assistant. She pretty much helps me with my aid in the classroom activities, 4H activities, you know, meetings, lining up for meetings and that sort of thing. Oh, she also helped with not leaving pests also. Secretaries of the Department, the pesticides also. So, setting out letters and that sort of thing, of course, answering the phone, you know, getting current with any trainings that occur through, you know, the 4H online or the, you know, the programs that we use for mid-extension and the website, or contacting specialists in the, within SDSU for any, you know, answer any questions that we have, because now we don't have any local specialists, we have local regional offices. So, that kind of, that kind of thing. So, like I said, it's kind of modeled toward, you know, the needs of the individual county. And we're not trying to take anything away from Walrus County for pesticide. Just wanted to be able to, if I'm here, you know, if I didn't have anybody in the office that could do it, or if we're up there, we could do, and just make it simpler so we could have that available more than just, you know, a couple days a week up in Campbell County, which I didn't want to be. Because sometimes, you know, you get a lot of people lined up, because like the general test generally takes four hours for an individual.
Now, when we took most of, a lot of the jobs with the extension, that's a little harder.
I question whether we need one.
You and I have had that talk before.
Oh, yeah.
I guess, like I said, I feel that it's a service to the community and, you know, individuals that, that, you know, call and want questions answered, to, you know, have somebody answering their phone. And we do have things, you know, within the 4H realm or whatever, I mean, as far as if it's, you know, activities for the kids, or achievement days, or state fair, or whatever. Those days are pretty intensive, and it's, I mean, they're long days for three individuals, might as well be long days for two individuals. And I think it sounds good to have that, you know, that person available to fill in, you know, to fill in the spaces of, you know, to help wherever you need, whenever, you know, as far as, you know, things come up. I mean, 2020 just kind of changed so many things, whereas as far as what we were doing, you know, having a lot of face-to-face meetings and stuff like that, but this pandemic's not gonna last forever, and we're gonna get back to things the way we had. I mean, back to doing things with the youth after-school programs and COVID bugs and that sort of thing. You know, someone, someone needs to do it. We need to do it. I mean, it's good for the kids. They get a lot out of the, out of the programs, and, you know, we're trying to help build the future leaders for our, for our communities, for our state, or our nation. 4H is definitely a great way for these kids to get that exposure and to become leaders of tomorrow.
How much time do you think that should be dedicated to 4H instead of pesticides or leading pests or whatever?
Well, you know, that's kind of like, it's, like I said...
What I'm hearing, you're wanting more for a 4H assistant than we are for an extension.
Not necessarily, because it all is dependent upon the phone calls that come. I mean, I don't know, as of today, I don't know who's gonna call in January and need their pesticide applicator training license renewed. I don't know that. I don't know how many people that is, because I didn't give the test. I know Brenda did a lot of them, but as far as the number, I don't know. You know, and it's, and I mean, the, you know, as far as the hours and stuff it takes, I mean, because somebody, I mean, somebody has to progress. That's the whole deal. And it has to be, the test has to be done on a computer. And it has to be an authorized computer. I mean, this can't be somebody just have a laptop, because I hear you go. So no, it's... Pardon?
How many do you think you did it here?
Quite a few, about fifty to sixty probably, a big portion of them from Northern Plains, Game Fish and Parks. Right now's the time of year where we're going to start to see a lot of that. I did call Amanda Bachman and Valerie Mitchell down at the South Dakota Department of A, and she felt, she was going to look into it. She felt that because there was somebody already here certified that I could proctor that test, because all you're doing is watching to make sure they don't cheat. That's it. And it goes in sports, May's going to be real busy. Right now, we'll start seeing some new hires for Northern Plains. I do, did see people from Campbell County. I see a lot of, I saw a lot of city sprayers where they needed to have the general and the public health number nine, which is spraying for mosquitoes. Now they've changed their whole deal. There's no more commercial or private, there's just one license. Everybody pays for it, whether you're a government official or not. I don't, I don't know if they're, they were going to change something about being exempt, their exempt policy. But then everybody has that same type of license, and you have to take the general, and then you take as many categories as you need after that. You know, you see a lot of people from Walworth County that come to that office for that, you know, and when I was in that office, there was twenty hours for the state's attorney, ten hours for court, and ten hours for 4-H. I want to remind you all sitting here that before Sherri was even here, I did that program, went to schools, we did the fair, we did state fair, and ten hours a week. I was doing programming in the schools under the guidance of SDSU, following the program. My things that I had to do, and I gave Sherri a printout of what Patty had given me of what the responsibilities were. It was taking care of 4-H, it was doing the Shine program, it was doing the medical equipment. And then there was...
Do you still have that list?
Sherri has it. I gave it to her.
You got to lose Sherri?
I believe there's a, there's a list that came from Patty, back when Patty was... That was the list that I followed. So, I guess I would hate, for my opinion, I would hate to see you lose that pesticide testing here in your county. I even took people as far as Timber Lake would call and make appointments. You know, the nice thing about me, you know, it sounds like I was really busy. Well, I was busy.
You were busy.
And I love my job, but it was easy to, okay, let me set that up. Okay, I can work on state's attorney stuff while I have you sitting here and I'm proctoring your test, because all I'm doing is proctoring. I'm not answering any questions, I'm not doing anything. All I'm doing is sitting there, making sure you don't cheat. Same thing you would do if you were taking AP classes in the local high school. You have to have somebody there to proctor the test. When I was in the library at school, I had people from the community come in, and their teacher would send me an email and give me all the information and have me proctor that test and then send back to them that I had proctored it and seen it. We see, we see a large, a large amount of people. I know that way back when we lost our agents, we no longer have agents because we have regional centers, so we don't have county agents anymore. Northern Plains came up to the board along with Game Fish and Parks and begged you to continue to let Patty do that program and proctor that program because of the large number of people in Walworth County. I see farmers, I would see farmers. Right now's going to be, start to be busy. It gets even busier in March because now if you haven't gone to a recertification class, now you have to come and take the test all over again.
They're not having any tech classes this year because it's still going to be work.
So that's...
If we get that list, would you and I sit down and go over it and see what our recommendations to the board would be?
We could.
Do you want me to go down and...
I just think that we can handle the pesticide with the staff we've got already. We can handle about everything maybe except the ten-hour and 4-H. With the staff we have already.
I think why don't you guys look over that and then bring the recommendation back. See what we have for applicants and go from there. All right?
Sure.
So, so we'll table how many hours and stuff until next meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Did you got, you say you got an applicant?
I do have an applicant. I recommend it.
Yes, I want to tell Maxi, the Iowa employees.
So it's January the...
January fourth.
Fifth.
Fifth.
Well, that's...
All right?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will get that in shape for you guys to take a look at. Do you want to stop by and pick it, pick it up, or?
You run back and get it.
I sure can do that.
Take copies.
I will do that. Well, I'll make some copies. How about that?
Great.
Thank you.
Emily?
Your...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Emily Steenbauer, and you're to talk about the Blue Blanket flood mediation. First of all, I want to thank you all for creating and conducting the engineer survey at the Blue Blanket on 300th Avenue. I support this project because the official surveys results indicate that there is a natural drainage from section six over to my land on section five. And the survey shows two culverts on 125th Street at slightly over 1729 feet in elevation. And so the water, and that's two and a half feet lower than the proposed culvert. Have you all seen the survey results? All right. So the water will stay west of 300th Avenue until the slough reaches that 1731.74 feet elevation of this proposed culvert. And additionally, the survey reveals that the water will only flow through there when the slough gets pooled from excess water like we've had the last two years. So, in a situation like this where you have a big slough, the water has to be able to flow freely through these existing culverts and the proposed one. And so it's imperative to maintain these existing culverts and keep them free from silting in, prevent them from silting in. So, anyway, I'm here to just confirm and give my full support to putting in that culvert that will create, provide that drainage, that natural drainage across my land on section five. But on the condition that those two existing culverts will be maintained and kept silt-free, prevented from silting in and blocking them.
Have you looked at those two culverts?
They're still underwater, but we don't know where they're at.
So, do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's easy compared to other stuff you deal with, right? So, I do have a question for Sherri though. With the existing conditions, how soon do you think you'll be able to start on this project and get those culverts cleaned out?
The culvert has already crossed 300th Avenue.
It's already in, okay.
But the two equalizer pipes, I'm pretty certain that's probably going to be a next spring thing.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
When the water goes down more.
And right now, there's quite a bit of freeze-up that's occurring that...
Yeah.
But it was the, it was the pipe across 300th first, and if the weather would have stayed, then would it have considered the equalizer pipes? But I think the weather kind of got us, so...
So just give me a call when you get that done, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Let me just send it here.
Okay, I'll call a meeting back to order. Who's number eighteen? Gosh. Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I'm Mr. Chairman of the motion for the two budget supplements.
Consider motion to approve a budget supplement to the sheriff's office in the amount of $150,000 for 2020 and $214,000 for 2021.
So it'll be two different motions, isn't it?
I would do two motions.
I'll make a motion to get a budget supplement, $150,000 for 2020.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, for the next motion, for the $214,000 for 2021, you need a motion?
So...
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. I'll second it. I have a second. Any more discussion on that?
From what I understand, we can't legally do a budget supplement for 2021 yet.
Mr. Chairman, my concern with it is, I don't think the $214,000 is going to cover, I believe it was for wages is what that was intended for. I don't think it's going to cover it. I would like to bring that back and give you a number so that I'm not coming, coming back again and we have to, we have to fix something.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, I guess. Any other discussion? Or just vote on it? All in.
Can the state's attorney invite us on that?
I missed the very first part, so there's, is there two parts? About $150,000 for the 2020?
That one's clear.
And then the $214,000 for 2021? And is that basically a modification of the budget that was already approved?
The budget that was already approved, the transport officers were considered jailers at that point. Because that was back in September before the jails closed. So, there was nothing built in the sheriff's budget for transport officers. And now they're considered sheriff employees.
Jimmy just made a comment that he thought was a reasonable to do.
I think, and Becky may know too, when we supplement a budget, don't we normally have to have a public hearing on that?
I, this is it.
Oh, this does have...
I did publish for both.
If it's been published, and this was the public hearing for the... Then I think you're probably okay. As long as it's been published and notified, modifying the budget, the public has gotten the opportunity to do their public hearing today. As long as paperwork in the newspaper was published correctly and says that public hearing to supplement, I think we're okay there, to be honest.
Any other discussion? Here, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passed. Consider motion to sign board of contractors' winner, winner deal.
I shall move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any more discussion on that?
Yes, baby.
What is the daily rate?
Seventy dollars a day.
For adult. Any other discussion on that? Here, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Okay, I quit on there, discussion regarding article in the papers that went in the poll. I guess, Mr. Chairman, I talked to you about it briefly. Had a phone call and in-person for a minute. I'm not sure what... What was, I mean, I know how I checked the article. And I'm not sure what, I'd like to, I guess I'd like to hear Commissioner Holder's explanation on what his thought process is. Because basically, in there, how I checked that, I'm the reason we're over budget. I'm the reasoning for decisions that the board doesn't agree with. And I, and I understand that. I'm going to have, I'm going to make decisions that aren't popular with the board. I already know that. Decisions have to be... I feel, feel like all the blame was placed on me in that article. And I don't know how that is. I, my crystal ball didn't tell me that jail was going to close. I had, we know when the jail closed. It closed in October. Short order, I had to put transport teams together. We went through several different scenarios and cuts and laid staff off. Calling me out in the, in the newspaper of, you know, of, as far as the vetting portion of the, of the employees, and one that's, is experienced and stuff. There's a lot that went into those decision-making, those decisions when they were being made. It wasn't an easy decision. It's not when you're laying people off. But there's reasons. And this board is not aware of those reasons. I don't discuss those reasons with this board. It was a difficult decision, period, to do it. I'm not sure how the rest of the board checked that article. But I'm, I mean, I'm not going to apologize for doing my job. I'm sorry. I'm just not going to.
I will give you an answer. I was, I was misquoted by my comment that I made in here. The only thing I was asking you was what was your plan when you hired a National Garden Force? And I said, if I'm doing the hiring, I'm going to have a plan because I know they're going to be gone. And I said, if I'm doing the hiring, I'm gonna have a plan, because I know they're gonna be gone. You said you did not have a plan. That was the only thing that I had asked, what your plan was. And I was misquoted for it, so I wanted to get it set straight that that's not what, that's not what was said, that's not what was intended to be said, that do not hire a National Guard person. That was, the whole intent of that article was to set the record straight, not to say, I did not say not to hire a National Guard person. I'm a veteran from the Air Force for thirteen years. You don't think that I don't care about military? My point was, if you're gonna do it, I just asked what your plan was. I've asked you for other plans, and there's never been a plan made.
We've had, we've had plans in this board that has chosen to make changes to those plans.
I've asked, I'm not gonna try to sit here and justify it and be ridiculed for it. I was merely explaining what I had said, that that means, I just asked what the plan was, and you did not have one.
I had several.
That was the whole intent of that article.
I had several different plans, and obviously that changed when we went to four people.
But when I asked you, you said there is no... Not, not at that point. That was, that was my, that was my whole intent. That was the only thing I was asking. And it got going way out of proportion, so I've relied on part-time staff in the past.
And that's why I did what I did, and recalled a couple of the old employees to help out. I still have one out that is still continuing to be isolated. This is a code.
You know, so that was my intent of the article.
Okay. Appreciate those comments, and I appreciate your service. I have a brother that's longtime in the National Guard, still is. Mr. Chairman, if you give me a few more minutes here, I would like to continue on.
Yes.
Thank you. I read the newspaper article that was in the Moberich and Selby papers. I'm not happy that this is being made out to be my fault according to the article. That's how I took it. Commissioner Holger, is this your intent to, and I guess I've asked the question already, to smear the sheriff's office and label them with fault of what is going on? It seems like the sheriff's office as a whole has been targeted for things out of my, out of my control. I had no idea the jail was going to close. I had to put a transport team together. I had to put things together in a short order of time, try and make things work. The commission then made them, made them all salary to be put them, to put them on call at home and check per diem away for meals. The county, that the county has always, has always paid, and the employees have gotten. It is not your job with these things, when it comes to my employees. It is not the, it doesn't have anything to do with this board. It's micromanagement, 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 is all this is. I had very little time to prepare for the changes the commission board has made, forced me to lay off jail employees on different separate occasions. Overall, we once had thirteen total employees with a couple of part-time employees. We now have four. A total of nine employees, including the jail administrator, have been laid off. The jail admin was put into a vacant deputy sheriff position within the sheriff's office. I have three staffing, three staff, excuse me, within the sheriff's office, sheriff and two full-time deputies. There is part-time, but that is very, very limited on how I can use them. This will not be depleted, as that would be negligent on my part, and that is not happening. The citizens of this county would not appreciate board forcing to do such a thing. It is not working with four transport employees. It is going to create, excuse me, a lot of turnover among employees. I have, I already have disgruntled employees already, and we're trying to work on those issues. As an elected official, I do not appreciate being the center of attention in a newspaper article, and I am speaking for all of us that are in elected office. Liability and safety are a huge issue with these cuts. I was ridiculed for using female transport officer to transport a female that used to be part-time or that used to be a full-time employee, that used to be part of the transport team until further cuts were made. I called her back to duty when I was shorthanded and no females were available to transport. This is going to happen with only having four transport, regardless of having sick leave or vacation or any other duties while the employee is gone. Vetting of employees for these positions is my responsibility, not the commission board's. Again, more micromanagement. I have to put the best people in place available to me at the time and utilize employees that I already have at my disposal. We have been fortunate that three of these employees laid off have stepped up to the plate to assist the shortfalls of the staffing. This has been a huge help to me and very much appreciated. Do not question me as to why I did something. You have no idea what went on during the selection process. It is very hard letting people go. Do you know all the facts as to why a person wasn't chosen for the transport? No, you do not. Many factors went into choosing the team. One of those is being accountable and the willingness to be called on short notice. Life, safety, and liberty of citizens of the county are at stake here and will not be sacrificed at any cost by my office, by the sheriff's office. The right things need to be done. The commission board should not be concerned with finding ways to undercut the system and cause additional liability and safety issues. Things need to be avoided. We don't want lawsuits. Making cuts and asking the sheriff to condone such ridiculous unsafe measures is ludicrous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. I fully agree. Leader number nineteen, Becky.
First thing on my agenda is to approve the budget supplement that was advertised. It was advertised as fifty-six thousand seven eighty-five sixty-three. Bill ended up coming into the fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents after Mike Engineering looked it over and gave me the amount yesterday. But the remainder of my budget can handle the difference, so the supplement only still will be the fifty-six seven eighty-five sixty-three.
Okay, I need a motion for that.
So move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any more discussion on that?
Will that pay it all off there, your work, all your...
Yeah, that pays the entire rest of the project off, and the check lets me out to Transors.
We're done then?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion passed.
They know, yeah, they're aware. The next thing on the agenda is the purchase of a pickup for the landfill. Contrary to Mr. Thompson's imagination, this pickup is not for department head, it is for landfill operations. The pickups we have barely make it to Moberich, and the landfill just needs a pickup. So we found this pickup, it's a, you guys have it in front of you, the price delivered, we can get it for seventeen thousand even. I looked, I went to Federal Surplus, looked all around, all the dealerships. This was the best, by far the best price.
Ballpark company, my, you guys put on a vehicle here.
Well, it's gonna vary, because now we're gonna have to be hauling plastic to Aberdeen more often. And just, you know, mainly it's parts run to Aberdeen, if we can something fixed, or run into Moberich to get supplies, you know, things like that.
Like twenty thousand, thirty thousand?
Oh, I wouldn't guess. I'd probably say those are fifteen. With that, but we'll have to see how this goes out where, have a recycling center out of the landfill.
Now, some of them vehicles out, you get surplus, some of them, I know there's so many dead vehicles, I don't know.
Yeah, we need the surplus, there's that old Crown Vic out there that has electrical problems. I don't even know if it's... Probably should just be buried, but, you know, we should try and surplus and sell it. And then the two pickups, the white one, it, it doesn't have third gear, but it's an annual transmission. We can still use it out there. But the blue one, I think that they're probably surplus and sell. We were talking about switching the fuel tank over to the white one and getting rid of the blue one.
Okay, I would take a motion on that, Chris.
I have one quick comment on this before, before the motion. I would like to abstain from this. Home and Service is a relative of mine. I checked on it, so I do not, I guess, give this to Becky and what they had up there, so I will abstain from doing with this.
And I will tell you that Beetle Ford, they have two two thousand fourteen Honda Fodies, and they want twenty-five thousand for one and twenty-six five for another. And the one for twenty-five thousand has ninety-seven thousand miles, so it's a huge difference in price. And in Federal Surplus, they had a two thousand nine Chevy pickup. They wanted, what was that one? They talked him down to sixteen six, that's all the lower you go.
Did you do, I don't know what they call a background check on this pickup, see what they've done for repairs or?
Yes. There, the list is, there is a list provided of when they took it in. There's new brakes on the front and back and new plugs on it and everything else, and you will provide the list if you want.
Any other discussion on that? Here none, I take a motion.
So move.
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any more discussion on that now? Here none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion passed.
Another thing I wanted to bring up is you all received the list of the care's reimbursement. You were originally authorized three hundred fifty-nine thousand. I kept submitting and kept submitting. It's up to date, and I'm not done submitting yet. I have submitted seven hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy. Back page shows it. We've been approved for seven hundred forty-eight thousand two ninety-one, and we've already received four hundred one thousand forty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Leader number twenty, consider motion to surplus or you go copier, fax, printer in the state's attorney's office. Take a motion for that?
I shall move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. I'll second it. I have a second. Any more discussion on that? Here none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion passed. Leader number twenty-one, discussion regarding salary and benefits in state attorney's office. I guess I put that on there, Jamie. I just was wondering, how is this working where that person is getting full-time benefits?
Oh, there's seventy-five percent in my office, and she's basically been picking up part-time work with Josh. Also, since we don't have a jail administrator anymore, we work with Josh, and you're doing the medical building, which she's billing the sheriff's office for that, which works her back up to forty hours.
Is that gonna be in your budget for next year for the, for the two?
They were already in it. I'm the only thing that is, we have part-time money coming out of Josh's budget for the medical building. Since Justin's now a deputy, not a jail administrator, he's not doing that anymore, so we picked it up for him, since we know how to do it. And then Randy's been in the transport before too, so.
All right, does anybody else have any questions on that? I put on there discussion regarding putting the background checks in the personnel policy. I, I just feel that that's, seems like it's more important all the time. I just thought it would just be something that probably should've been in the personnel policy. Who knows when the policy was brought up? But I thought of putting it in the general policies at the beginning, an equal employment. I just thought this is something like any county commissioner has the right to background check any new hire or a hired employee. I don't know what you guys are, would think, but I just thought that was just something that that would not hurt a thing, because I know there are there's times when it should've been done.
They're not our employees.
Nobody, who hires them? Who interviews a lot of them that have been interviewed, how we do the interview now?
For our few, uh...
We do it for...
Highway. Highway, uh... Devlin Office and weeds.
Yes, Mary?
Aren't the department heads doing background checks when they hire? Or is that not a requirement?
What's your definition of a background check?
Just I, I'm just thinking of different things on the record, I don't know.
That's kind of what you need to define, because if you ask someone to, the sheriff, to run a triple I, he won't do that because he can't. Which is a criminal history. If you want to go to a private, someone who advertises online or something like that, or where it's like, oh, run this criminal history, that's perfectly fine, but you can't run a triple I, except for law enforcement purposes. The other issue you may have with regard to the background check is, how do you keep that private? Also, one of the problems that you're gonna run into is, is the elected officials hire their own staff. So I don't know how that's going to apply or how it would be something that could affect the decision on a commissioner anyhow, because the elected official hires his own staff. So those are the questions that you have to think about before you put that in there.
As an employer, do you have, I mean, you have the right to run a background check?
As long as you don't use law enforcement.
Okay.
You can, you can run whatever you want, that's public information, through a public entity. You just can't use the sheriff's office to run a criminal history.
You mean, are the, are the heads, department heads kind of doing that as of right now? Do we know that, or?
I've never done.
I've never done. If I was gonna do it, I would go through Jamie, cause I wouldn't want to do something that put the county in jeopardy. You know what I mean? I mean, you check with their references and stuff like that, but.
I think it's something that should be. I know how long I've been here and I know that there's been people that probably should have been background checked a long time ago.
When, when we interview, and I, I don't know about the department, you can ask the question, can they be bonded? If they've, if they've got a felony, they cannot be bonded. So.
Like in my office, we handle no cash. You know what I'm saying? We have, we have no cash in the office. We don't handle any cash.
It doesn't mean that doing a background check on somebody has anything to do with cash. To me, that's not what it is. I have a reason that I think that that it could be something not quite. I feel I should have the right to do that. I'm doing, I'll, I'm asking that because I'm working for the taxpayers of all the county. I would think that they would think that I should do that. I, I don't think it's asking out of the, anything to requesting that.
So would that go for someone who's running for office also? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Well, Jamie just said it. I mean, elected official is elected official. He pretty much said that.
And there's public, um, there's public resources out there. I mean, you see them online all the time, but, you know, to find out information, especially in the digital age now, we can find out a lot of stuff publicly, where you have to pay a fee, you know, like that.
I just feel that if there's, if some of this would get done, we wouldn't be having these, some issues sometimes.
I agree, we shouldn't be able to do it, but my question is, is if it's an elected official that's gonna go out and do whatever they wanna do anyway, what difference is it gonna make? We have no control over anything up here as commissioners. So, I agree that we should be able to, but what difference is it gonna make when we have no control already?
All it is, is asking to put it in there. If it's in there, then you can. If not, no big deal.
I agree, it should be in there.
I think what the state's attorney is saying is how, or how it's obtained. Um, I have to be careful unless you're a law enforcement related, um, employee. Um, I can't do one on the janitor. I can't do one on the, you know, that's a civilian position. Okay? Um, law enforcement goes through several different checks. When I ran, L E T had to sign off on it, that I was in good standing when I ran for county sheriff. I mean, I don't know what the, what, but on my end, that's what we do. And as far as a background, background check, Mr. Chairman, it's a, um, not necessarily a criminal history, but it's also through your interview process contacting previous employers and, um, references. There's a whole, I mean, there's several different things. But you guys are already able to do a background check. You just have to do it a different way. I just can't do it for the board. As Mr. State, as the state's attorney stated, I can't run, I can't run a triple I, which is a criminal history. I can't legally do that. There's things and regulations that prohibit me from doing that, or I can get sanctioned and get in trouble.
I just figured it'd be no big deal to put it in there. If a guy ever used it, we use it. If not, we don't. Yes?
Is there a cap that can be on that? So, when I worked at the sheriff's office, I had already completed the extensive triple I background check because you can, they can do that for law enforcement purposes. And then I switched offices and then had another background check done. So, if you switch within agencies, do you have to get a background check within each department?
I think it's up to that department.
Okay. Something that, for maybe the clarification of things?
I, I would think so. Like I said, I've been here for whatever, five, six years and I, I, I know for a fact, there's not a question in my mind, that there should have been background checks done. Previous. That I can say.
I've just already had one, so.
So that's all I'm asking for in there, that I just think it should be something that's in that personnel policy if you don't want it. It's what about you guys? You guys are the ones that are gonna put it in there.
So it seems, it seems to me like this background check would have, we'd have to, basically define what type of background check we're gonna put in.
What you wanna look for? Um, whether it's criminal history, or financial history, or credit report, or, cause a lot of that stuff also kinda gives you some insight into, some of those issues. I know like, uh, a lot of employers now want to be able to access your credit report. Um, and things like that, which used to never happen. Um, and things like that. So it would be good to define, um, what you specifically want to get out of that report, whether it would be, um, credit judgments, um, civil lawsuits, criminal history. I mean, you can kind of past residences, phone numbers. I mean, you can pretty much entail these background checks to whatever information you particularly want. Then of course, there's a, a price associated with that. I know like, I look myself up and, you know how they have those teasers for forty-four ninety-nine, you can find out whatever you want on this person. And then they just, and then they kinda give you, oh, this person has lived at this address and gives you a partial address. And, um, it went all the way back to when I was eighteen and in the military. That's how accurate. But some others are not very accurate. It's, uh, all depends upon a lot of information, common names, um, things like that. So, and what you wanna retrieve out of those. The triple I is only gonna give you criminal history.
And we can't do that.
Correct. A background check is something that you would say, okay, when we run a background check, this is what we want to do. Do you wanna run their, uh, criminal history? Do you wanna run their, uh, credit score or credit history? Uh, do you want to, um, cause a lot of employers wanna know credit history now, especially if their employees are dealing with lots of finances. Um, because that person's in significant financial trouble, that may be an indicator of a need for cash or whatever. And then it's part of your decision making process. So what I would probably recommend is, is figure out what you wanna get, or prior addresses, you know? Um, that way you can compare, um, their application versus what other things are to see how accurate they are on the information that they provide you, or prior employment can come up too. It's. Yeah, just kinda stuff that would maybe, um, trigger concern before you continue to go in the interview process, or trigger a potential question that you may have when you're doing the interview process. But I would think you definitely want to, um, put in, if, if you're gonna put that in there and, as long as you define what you want, and then also how you're going to safekeep that document, or what you're gonna do with that document once you're done with it. Um, you know, once you're satisfied, I would put in there that if you're going to request, um, or if you're gonna state that you can, that doesn't mean you have to. Um, if you want to run one, that's fine, but put in there what you want to run. So that way, if it has all the information that you want, and then once that that history has served its purpose, I would say you put right in there that it will be destroyed. There's no need to keep it. Um, but again, that's, you know, other places, keeping personnel files or things like that, but that's, I would start there as far as this is what we want to get out. Other thing is, is, um, you know, figure out and then what you're going to do with that document once you're done.
By legal, I suspect they assume you, but by legal, I mean, you gotta keep, once somebody applies for that, you gotta keep their application for a year.
Correct.
Correct.
I don't know how long you have to keep the application.
Right here. Um, I was just gonna mention that I could send out an email to all the other counties and see what their policy states about background checks.
I, I just think, I just think that this is gonna be something more and more. I don't care what anybody says, uh, you're, you're gonna see people moving around a lot. It's just gonna.
I would just definitely, um, I think Becky has a good idea, find out what the other ones are doing, but then put down, this is what we want to get in that privately ordered background check. What you want to have in there. And if you want criminal convictions, that's fine. Um, the, the things that I would find important are prior employment verification. So you can match what they're putting on their application to what they're actually doing. So, say I had a, I worked for John Doe's Wagon Factory and got fired and I didn't list that, but yet when you run the background check, it says that I worked for IBM for three years and didn't include the fact that, well, I only really worked for IBM for two years and worked for John Doe's Wagon Factory and got fired, but I didn't tell you about that. Or, again, when people are handling lots of cash or things like that, you know, banks always check on that kinda stuff. Um, and one of the big things they run is your credit history because of the fact that if, um, another thing, I know of military, when they run, they run your credit history to find out if you are a threat to be used for a, if you're going to have a security clearance, they wanna make sure that you're financially sound, because that's one way the enemy can, uh, use to get you to provide information or blackmail you or whatever. So, but, uh, we can handle a lot of them here.
If, if we were to approve this and put it in the personnel policy, is that going to just affect commissioners as far as what their background checks are gonna be for who they hire? Or is that gonna go down the line and affect all the individual?
It depends upon what you wanna put in there. Um, you know, if you put in your policy that says that a county commissioner can run a private background check, um, then that's what you're authorizing them to do. Based, and then have the criteria in there of what you wanna have in that background check. Um, or if you say that, uh, you recommend that, uh, all non-elected department heads run a criminal history or whatever. Um, but the other thing is, there's just so much you wanna find out about people nowadays because so much goes through the crack. Um, one entity I know of had, um, a, a significant issue with regard to, um, well, I guess I really shouldn't say, but, um, certain things that just a criminal history won't show, that can kinda be a red glaring red flag if you look at it under different things, like addresses or employment or, um, civil.
I guess my question though was for protection to the county, if we put this in personnel policy with the, with the elective officials that are hiring, people have to do the same thing?
I don't think so.
They don't have, follow that policy.
It'd be up to them.
Yep.
I think my parent, the state's attorney does it already, um, their offices.
We don't do it in ours because of law enforcement.
And I understand that you accept it.
Well, I can run criminal information other than through a triple I, um, or I can pay privately. Um, so, or I can, or I can verify information through other agencies. There's other, I mean, once you kinda know how to do certain things, there's a lot of stuff you can accomplish without having to, um, use your normal, cause there's information out all over.
I'll just write some stuff down and Becky's gonna do the little check and we can discuss it at a different date. Thank you. Okay, I had, uh, I added a few things, motion to not pay any more CDLs in the highway department. I'll, I'll be honest. To me, that's, it's not making any sense. Cause because when, when you hire somebody down in the highway department, uh, you recommend you gotta, you're supposed to have a CDL. I think that this, what this is, Gary might know, I think this was brought about back in the day when CDLs were not. You didn't have to have a CDL. And then I think that you guys got together like the forces in trucking and you guys all did a CDL and had a class together. Not kinda right, Gary, but I think that's what, how this all came about. I, I guess I don't, I don't see why the county should pay for somebody's CDL. You, you are recommended to have that CDL when you go to work there. I don't know how you guys look at it, but.
It's always.
Would you pay Jim to just make sure?
Always been my policy, if you're going, going to require an employee to have something other than the basic, like a basic driver's license to come to work, then you need to pay for it.
Who needs to pay that?
The employer. That's always been, well, not only mine, but in, in every organization I've ever belonged to. You're gonna require somebody to have something more than, in this case, more than just a basic driver's license that he would use coming to work, like Debwood or, or Jamie or somebody who'd have a basic. If you're gonna require them to have more than that, you need to pay for it.
I don't think that we, there's nothing in the policy that says that.
No, I don't deny that, but that is, that's been the policy of many organizations I've been with and it's, it's always been that way ever since I've been old enough to be involved in any of it.
I guess I, I mean, I have no problem with that either way. My question is, is if we're gonna do that, if we're going to pay for the CDL, why are we not just paying for the CDL part of the license instead of paying for their whole driver's license?
That, yeah. I wouldn't have any problem with that. And I don't know, is there, I assume, you know, Gary, is there an additional charge for a CDL over basic, you know, we're not talking about much.
No, we're, we're, we're talking on real small portion.
I think Gary told me his, when he renewed his, it's for ten years.
Six.
So.
Six years.
Six. So.
Again, it's not a lot of money, but I didn't say anything about being a lot of money. That's, that's not why you brought it up.
I, I did a little research in preparation for, for this action. Calma County, if they hire somebody that doesn't have a CDL, Calma County pays for the testing. And, uh, the testing includes, uh, the applicant has to do the driving test where you're backing their own cones and stuff. And, uh, I think that's a two hundred and fifty dollar cost. And Calma County pays that. If they don't, if, if they currently don't have a CDL, I'm hired. So.
I just, I could see paying for an initial CDL, but not for a renewal.
I, I know that it got paid for in the beginning when CDL came back around.
And that was part of a federal mandate, that anybody driving a vehicle over twenty-six thousand and one pounds was required to have. And, uh, that included all the, the people that drives a truck. Single actual truck, whatever. Uh, there's different endorsements on it if you're tankers. There's different endorsements on it, if you're tankers, passengers, materials, combinations, doubles, triples.
I guess I got a question regarding that then, Gary, if, if I come into the Highway Department and, and apply for, have a, apply for a job, I have already have in my CDL, do they reimburse me for the cost of that CDL?
I wanna say after employment.
Yes. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to nix it, I'm just saying, it seems like we do, we spend a lot of money, and this is a, we're talking small dollars here, but all these dollars add up. Our county is going backwards every year. And it's just one of those little things that seems like we pay for stuff that, I personally have a CDL. I went and spent my money to get a CDL when I was farming. I understand if somebody's going to apply for a job, that's part of the requirement. I, I don't have a problem with the, with the business paying for that initial cost of that CDL. But then, you're gonna have people that already have CDLs that come into the play that they didn't get paid for that CDL to have it taken. And if we're gonna reimburse them, that's one thing, but I just, I just find it hard to believe that we're paying for CDLs once we've had them, basically, we're redoing the driver's license. I just renewed mine in October.
I, well, you know, you've already commented that the cost is minimal. Mine was $33 for the driver's license and the CDL. So we can do an assumption that, do some fast math, if there was ten employees at the Highway Department that were CDL holders, if they were all required to get a CDL license, January first of 2021 for renewal, the cost would be $330. Now, we know, in my case, I'm good for six years. You know where I'm going? The cost is a hundred and, I'm gonna drop a number out of space, and, and the internal cost of, of an employee with a CDL license is probably, the whole Highway Department, a hundred and fifty dollars a year, is it really worth the effort to micromanage?
I, I don't disagree with that at all. I just, I think this whole discussion came about with the whole, uh, per diems on, on the Sheriff's Department. We took that away, but yet, we didn't take away the CDL. That's my personal opinion. And I, I guess I was probably one of them that made the comment, you know, after we did that, okay, how come we didn't do that with the CDL?
I've been witnessing, I've been witnessing some internal stuff that's going on that everybody is like, these guys picked on us, now we're gonna pick on these guys. And that's a cancer that is developing into something absolutely crazy. Going back, that if I put that out in the paper, that, that we're looking for a full-time employee, it's that opportunity there that CDL is required. And whatever action you guys take today, that, uh, if we require a CDL and we don't have one, then we specify in the ad, open to whoever wants to put an application in that, well, I don't have to have a CDL. And the ad could be written, CDL required within six months. It's, it's all can be fine to in the application. Maybe simply that not reimbursable. You know, depending on you guys' action brings about, some internal management situations that would be dealt with at the employment thing.
I don't have a problem requiring them to have a CDL when we look at them to hire them. I think if we're gonna ask them to maintain, and I don't care if it's just a additional cost, whatever it is, $10 or whatever over, but if you're gonna require that employee to have it, I think we need to pay for it.
Yes, Gary.
You need to be careful in your comments. You know, we just went through, I was about a month of advertising for a replacement for the vacancy. One application. Now, if you require a CDL, that takes a lot of potential good employees out of the picture. You follow me?
Yep.
For perceived hundred, $150 of cost in a $1.2 million budget.
I would say, I could, I could see paying for an initial CDL, but not pay for renewal.
Then what's my incentive, once I got the job, to keep it? Gary isn't gonna know.
Get your driver's license.
Gary isn't gonna know, he isn't gonna ask me to show, he, he isn't gonna want to see my driver's license every day when I come to work.
It's just a requirement.
It shouldn't be unhandled.
He knows that.
People required to have vehicle insurance too that don't.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring it up, I'm not gonna waste all day long on this. We will move on. Okay, here's a letter from Dave Ritter. I had this on the agenda, yes, Becky?
Do you wanna just do the highway transfers quick while Gary's still here, so he doesn't wait?
And Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing. I kinda wanna, under the old business part, I kinda wanna report to you about that fence thing, North County Line, to close that out for 2020.
In your business?
In our business, so...
Okay, we'll go do the highway transfers. Okay, these gotta be done individually?
No, you just need a motion to approve the highway transfers.
Okay, the motion for, uh, motion for $235,626.29. That's for the Highway Department. I'll need a motion for that.
I'd say maybe.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll second it. Any more discussion on that?
That'll come later.
Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion passed.
Yeah.
And now I got this letter from Dave Ritter. I regret, but I attended my resignation at Lawrence County Weed Supervisor as of January 15th, 2021. Thank you for the opportunity to serve Lawrence County Weed Board. I would take a motion for that.
So...
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll second it. I need a second. Any discussion on that?
I know he was at our last weed board meeting and said that he was probably gonna do this. His business has gotten, private business has got to a point where he can't dedicate enough hours for spring, so... That's why he said that he was probably gonna be done this year.
Anything else?
You've done a great job for us.
Is someone gonna advertise for a replacement, or?
Uh, the Weed Board is looking at different people right now. We should have an answer here, I'm impressed.
So you have to advertise? Jamie?
Great.
I have previous advertisements, if you want them. Lot of them.
I'll let you know when we're done and start running.
Okay.
Jim?
What's that?
You reading your mind?
I, I just hate to accept his resignation.
Me too. Any other discussion? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion passed.
It is not easy filling that job.
Old business. Now, Becky?
Are we gonna do 23?
Close. Consider motion authorized contingency transfers to appropriate budget as needed.
So the total that is needed to cover budgets is $69,224.77. $54,953 of that was the commissioners due to the $91,000 check that was written. The other ones are minimal. Um, I've given you guys the lists, the ones that needed it are highlighted. So if you have any questions or need a motion for that?
Is that $69,294.57?
Seventy-seven.
I'll take the motion.
I'm making a motion to authorize contingency transfers to appropriate budgets.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion passed. Just Gary.
This is follow-up to, uh, Rick Bocchi's, uh, fence was across the North County Line on 317th Avenue, that is the county line. The, the unfenced portion, uh, from the flat book is on 320th Avenue, that's the middle of the page. It's a northeast, northwest corner of Section 3. If you guys are following along. When Terry Madden and I visited that a couple weeks ago, off, after the commission meeting, request for us to investigate, the gate was in place. I did send a letter that it had to be, fence had to be removed. Anyway, I'm reporting that the fence has been removed, uh, in the northwest quarter of 3. And you can kinda see by the flat book, the, the red dotted line indicates an improved section length. I drove it, uh, recently. The fence is down. I accessed the section line to look for liability issues, uh, cover washouts, things like that, and none existed. I drove, uh, from 320th Avenue east a half a mile. And, uh, at that point, there was a gate across the North County Line. But, uh, that portion of the section line didn't look like it was improved. Which gives reference on the, on what I provided, by the way, that's out of the flat book, our most recent flat book. So that's verification that, uh, the first half mile is improved. From that half mile line on to the east is unimproved. Whereby, subject to the state's attorney's opinion, but whereby, uh, if, if he wants to put a fence back in at the northeast quarter of 3, northwest quarter of 3, it's required to be gated, and he's required to have permission from the board annually. This gets from that half mile point, like you're seeing on the dotted line, uh, the unimproved section length part, he doesn't have to have permission from the county commission to fence that. But it has to be gated. So that's follow-up. As far as I'm concerned, that's a done deal. Uh, hopefully, this YouTube thing will get, get out, and I will have to send any messages out or letters out. I informed, uh, Scott Rowell, the chairman of Calma County, the approach I was taking, and they were gonna concur. But then, it wasn't a board decision, it was a chairman's decision that, uh, that half mile, that's red dotted lines, he's gotta have permission to fence that annually. It would be the northeast corner of the northwest quarter of 3. Uh, he can, there was a gate in place that I saw. As far as I'm concerned, he doesn't need any more authorization, as long as there's a gate there. Hopefully, that closes out that thing. And there's one item that I recollect, uh, it was still old business, that we tabled the bill from Ty and Rachel Enderbird for a stolen gold for 2019, uh, over the winter. There's gonna be a modification, I'm gonna be working on a modification of the county highway system. That will bring about the dialogue for all those potential areas of question. And time to research, so that one, I would say, leave that, you can make the decision. We're not gonna pay the bill, or leave it tabled for review of the possibility of amended county highway system coming in till 2021. Frankly, if it comes to my recommendation, it would be, I guess, ridiculous to pay bills when they weren't authorized for payment.
I agree. I would like to get that much in our... All I got.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
It'll be New Year's.
Any other old business? Yes.
Just kinda for the commissions, FYI, Judge Myron's last day was yesterday, get sworn in on the Supreme Court. Next week, we're going to have a temporary judge, which is Judge Erickson, he's retired out of the Third Circuit. Probably for three or four months until they appoint a new judge. That'll probably come in April or May, so, um, it'll be, I would assume some changes will come with each one, but just kinda here FYI, on what's going down there, so...
Um, just, I don't know, I, I'm sure all the commissioners are aware of this, but if you're not, Heather Beck called me after our last meeting, and she has two people that does 911 addressing for the city. Those two people went out, updated our 911 addressing, um, they got it done in three and a half hours, and they are going to continue to do it for the county at no charge.
Three and a half hours to three months?
I, I don't know, she just, she said it took them three and a half hours.
Look into this a little deeper. I don't wanna make any more comments on the open record.
On whether it was done right, you mean, or?
That, and who we're gonna have to deal with then. We need to have somebody find out if it was done right. Done, took, if everything was, not, not done right, if everything was done that needed to be done for, because it's my understanding, it takes more than three hours to do it. We can look into that, yeah. New year.
Any other, just, uh?
How are we coming on the trailer for the deal?
I, I was down there...
I've been going till last night. I've been gone till last night, I don't know.
Zach was working on it when I was, when I was down there, because I measured, did some measuring, I was going to put some stakes in, as soon as I get back from, just got a little bit left down where I was working. As far as I know, Zach was starting to put it together inside. Have you been down there, Zach? Have you talked to Zach?
I texted him, but I haven't gotten a response yet, but we haven't traded.
Yeah, it's in, actually, it's in Pat starts his shop.
I saw he's working on it at.
He was, like I said, he was going to work that night when I was, when I was there. So when I was, as soon as I'm done down there, I should finish.
Yeah, he said he stopped over.
Finish up this afternoon, then I was going to stuff that stuff up. I said, I was a little weak going, he was, he was starting to put the stuff in the inside, so. Any other business? Here and none, I take a motion.
Are you on the business? I guess I just have one question for Jamie. Is the resolution a law or is it just a suggestion?
Suggestion.
Any other? Any other new business? I have a motion. Got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.